Gives us a clue of its age.
Seven oh one on my laptop here. So with that, let's begin the meeting. Kay, would you take role?
Nicholas DeFrank is absent. Jeff Dablin is absent. Nick Michion.
Here.
Kim McGee.
Here.
Jared Mork.
Here.
Cindy Suplesio.
Here.
Jesse Garcia.
Here.
Ann Crimmer.
Here.
Franco Palumbo.
Here.
Recording in progress.
I think that was from David's computer. Alrighty, thank you Kay. I see there's a few things under our roll call, Jared.
Yeah, so we added a few items. One, just kind of voting privilege assignment, I guess. We're still working on the terminology, but just to make it aware. We have seven voting members, two, four, six, seven. We have seven here, so everyone tonight can vote. If a full house, then we'll just announce that the alternates won't be voting, but for tonight's purpose, everyone's here. And then the other item that we added is disclosures of conflicts of interest. We just figured this would be a good item just to have on our agenda. If anybody does have any conflicts of interest that they would like to disclose early on in the agenda is a good opportunity to do so. Something I saw was missing at our Board of Adjustments meeting last night. Felt that maybe we could just include those moving forward in other agendas, so.
Yeah, are these just going to be permanently under?
We might pull them out to their own headers, but that's where they're at for tonight.
Cool. I guess we'll just address that. Does anybody have any conflicts of interest with this project? Great. Okay, so the next item, I guess with that will be the consent agenda approval of the meetings from June 12th. Anybody have any comments or anything to add to those? As always, Kay, thank you. And I'd like to entertain a motion. Alright, motion from Cindy, second from Jesse. Do we put this to a vote? Alright, everybody in agreeance?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next up, public comment for topics not on the agenda. If you're online virtually or here in person and you'd like to talk about something that's not being discussed tonight, now is your time to speak. Looks like nobody, okay. We're cruising through this. Okay, and then that leads us to our first action item, and I believe our only action item of the night, 522 Highway 33 material change. I want the presenters to introduce themselves and discuss the proposal.
David Worth, the architect representing Chester Student Bev LLC.
I'm Chester, I'm the owner.
Cool. Thank you guys for the comments last week. I think they were positive and we took them to heart and came back with an adjusted design for you guys. So in response to the commission's prior feedback regarding the large unarticulated wall and the removal of the stone due to the value engineering, we reevaluated the material selection with both respect to budgetary concerns and the architectural intent of the project. So rather than proceeding with the typical concrete wall that you saw last week, we're now proposing board form concrete where you're seeing this red line. So you guys are all familiar with this volume. This is about 20% of the facade area, and I'm sure most of you guys have seen or heard of board form concrete. This approach introduces a rich texture that reflects craftsmanship in permanence that was originally intended with the design. But it offers a little bit more visual interest due to the shadow play and natural variation in the material without having to introduce applied decorations such as pigmented concrete or murals. The solution aligns with the overall intent to create a building that serves as a modern enduring statement for the town. We believe that the architecture should stand on its own merits through form proportion and materiality rather than relying on surface applications. The use of board form concrete is deliberate and it elevates any response to the integrity of the original design intent of the project. And we hope it addresses your concerns with the original or the previous design. We appreciate your guys' continued engagement on the project and all the feedback you have given us. So here's a quick rendering that we did, and we can do it in both one by six and one by eight formats. As you can see, it provides a much richer texture to that facade where you enter. And we're maintaining the original wood and black and steel fascia, so nothing else has changed here.
Great, is that all?
Yes.
Great. Okay, thank you David, thank you Chester for being here. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any comments on what we're being proposed tonight? I would like everybody to say something at some point, so. I'll call names. Thank you Cindy.
I think at the last meeting, it was clear that color and texture were requested, and we did get texture, but we didn't get color. Though I think it's, it'll be at interest to the building. I think it's workable. Because I did cruise 133 slowly and see if there was any other concrete exposed that you can see from 133, and there isn't.
Ann, I'm sorry, I think I'm going to interrupt you real quick. I think I misspoke. If we have any questions for applicant, that's what we need to be focusing on.
No, what they're giving us is what they've applied with.
Great.
I don't really have any questions, other than is it just a colossal delta between the original stone that we saw in this?
Yeah, it's six figures, believe it or not, which was very surprising to me, but we got hard numbers from, I think Suarez and then Pyen Framers, so. It's north of $100,000.
And sorry, anybody else have any questions, any of my fellow commissioners? Okay.
I guess it's hard from this angle. You showed the red line on the other image. Okay, so then the majority of the red line is underneath the overhang?
Yes, so this entire northernmost line, it's all under the bridge.
Okay.
You can see that here, it's this.
And is, sorry, I guess it's my turn to ask a question. This delta that we're seeing, this is still including board form, right? We're looking at accelerated costs for construction when you do board form, so I just want to make sure we're up, running on that same understanding?
Yep, yes it is.
Okay.
Yeah, it was surprising to me. I was blown away, but I think masonry numbers are through the roof right now.
I would agree. Okay, anybody have any further questions? If not, I'd like to open this up to public comment. Nope, do we have anybody from the public online? As I don't see anybody in here. Great, so with that, I'd like to entertain a motion as well.
Motion to close public comment.
Thank you Jesse. Ann made the motion, Jesse seconded. All in favor, I guess. Do we have to vote on closing the public comment?
No, you can just close.
Great, alright, so closed then. Thank you guys. Now I believe it's time for commissioner comments. Let's discuss amongst ourselves here. I think what they're proposing is a great address of our comments. But I would urge everybody to consider, you know, the placement of this project and where it is and gateways and 133. Do we feel like this is something that represents our vision for the 133 corridor? Is this something that, you know, is this, is this what we're looking for for the town? Nick, I'll start with you, as a fellow architect.
Well, I had a lot to say about it last time. I think my comments still remain the same. I think it needs to remain in key, and the best way to do that is you're kind of halfway there with board form. I think that's really helpful. I would like it to. I would like the applicant to consider some sort of pigmented concrete. You're going to have to pigment it to get it to go gray as shown in the illustration. Otherwise, it tends to go kind of green, which doesn't go well with the red tones. That's kind of the key. That's all.
That would be more in relation to like the mixture of sand used inside of it, or?
Pigments could be literally that, pigments, pigment additive, or aggregates that are also red, like the stone aggregate could be another way of doing it, but pigments would be the easiest way to do it. I don't think there's an additional cost associated with that. Doesn't have to go hard red, it just needs to be a little closer to in key.
Cool, thank you Nick. But you, I guess, just for the clarification, we, board form, is that, is that still answering your?
I really like board form concrete. I think it looks fantastic. It's got, you know, it's got, it speaks to the rest of the palette. I think it speaks to, you know, you know, additional complexity. It speaks to texture, pattern, all the things that we're looking for in a project.
Okay. Thanks Nick. Franco.
Yeah, I like Nick's comments. I like the board form. I think the big thing about, you know, what we're looking for, design standards is, you know, we're breaking up the big walls with texture and design. I think you've accomplished that with the board form. So I'm fine as is, but if, you know, our commissioners have, you know, a better texture, not texture, but a pigmentation idea, then I'm happy to hear.
Thanks Franco. Kim.
I like board form concrete as well. However, I really felt like the stone gave it a feel of quality and it broke up all the geometric lines that we're seeing, and I just feel like this is such an important building to us because it's really at the entrance to the town. I like your idea of pigmentation. If, if we're really stuck on the board form concrete, but I really feel that the stone suits the area ties in more with the stucco at La Fontana, shows an investment in quality. You know, even the storage across the street is brick. So I'd like, I'd still like to see the stone.
Okay, thank you Kim.
Thank you for taking our comments back and considering options. I know you guys spent some good time and energy focusing in on those comments, so we appreciate the efforts. I appreciate the texture, so thank you guys for taking that with good feedback and coming back. I think for the commissioners, the applicant is meeting the intent of giving us that texture piece that we asked for the first time. The pigment, maybe something that they could work on, but yeah, curious to see what everybody else's thoughts are as well on that one.
Thank you Jesse.
Okay. I think the board form is an interesting way to bring in texture, but when I did my scouting of 133, every building either had brick or stone on it. I think only the co-op might not have. That might be the only building I can think of off the top of my head. And no one had gray concrete anywhere. Everything was a stucco finish. It had earth tones. You know, ranging from rusty tones to sand tones. We did direct the architect to come back with color and texture, and they've only brought us texture. I think giving them the option of giving us a new plan to try to work with them and work within their budget. That, that, I feel like we were trying to help them with this project, and I'm disappointed that they only came with one of the two conditions. The stone definitely would be better. I don't know if there's other places in the project they could recoup some cost. But when you only had two things to provide and you bring one, I don't think I can support that.
Thank you Ann.
Like I said, I like it. I like the texture, and I feel, I feel like it has a color variation. It's not all great. You know, it seems to have some light and dark. I don't know how that, I don't know that much about board form, but I think it looks great. I like it.
Thank you Cindy. We don't have anybody online, right?
No.
Okay. Thank you everybody for sharing your opinions. I do, I find myself at a conflict here because I am a very big fan of brutalism and board form concrete especially. What is my biggest stipulation in this is the precedent that it sets for the 133 corridor and where we're having, you know, gateways into the, into the town, right? And if we're allowing board form concrete to be kind of the, what we're seeing a lot on 133, is that something that we feel is carbon Dale? I don't know if I would put that really in that, in that same token. You know, I think we have precedent already of stone. It was presented with stone applicably. And regardless, there's going to be concrete core placed here. You know, and I obviously have my own opinions on design here, but I'll withhold those. I think to me, this doesn't represent carbon Dale. This doesn't represent like what we're looking to get in here. I feel like, and you're correct, I feel like we gave quite a few options of intent for them to, to match, and we're only seeing one here, or at least just one option. I guess with, with my comments and, and, and light, does anybody have anything further to add to that, or are we looking to, you know, put this to a vote? I think we're not, I think we're pretty split, so I'd like us to discuss this a little bit further and try to see if we can understand each other a little bit better. Yeah, Nick, please.
So, I think if it's raw concrete, I'm not sure they're going to be able to control the outcome as much as they would like. The pigment is going to be a way to, to control that outcome, so I really do think that they need to consider pigment. No matter what it is, otherwise you're just pouring concrete and hoping for the best.
Right.
So we don't want that, because it's, there's no getting rid of it. Once it's there, it's there. That's all.
Nick, have you, have you had any experience with pigmentation of concrete out here in the valley?
Yeah.
And to your knowledge, it doesn't feel like it adds extraneous cost to this.
No, it's just a, you just add a bag of pigment to the mix and, you know, it's mixes. The, the, what you end up with, if, you know, in multiple pores, you want to make sure the pigment ratios are exactly the same every pore, otherwise you end up with like different colors per pore. But that's, you know, we might have two or three pores in this, in these walls, but I don't see it being that much of an issue, especially if you pour one plane at a time. I think you could probably, you know, Suarez is good.
I would agree.
Yeah, so I don't think that's too much of an issue.
So I have a question for Nick. Would the gray color, is that a pigment? Would you add a pigment that color, or are you talking about a red or a yellow?
If they're proposing gray, then they would want to add gray pigment, absolutely.
But it would still have the same effect.
Yeah, I mean, to achieve that outcome will require pigment, without question. That is not raw concrete, and that's not pine, that's cedar.
That's pine pulled directly from the Thermarie's website.
That is not pine. That is, that is pine that is baked, right? So it's darker. That is not, that is not what pine looks like. That's what cedar looks like. Okay, so it's, it's cooked and, and darkened because of the cook, okay.
Yeah, and it's also, it's basically edge glued kind of material, some of it at least from Thermarie is.
Is it, I may not be able to ask them at this point in the meeting, but since we've been having challenges with people changing the materials that we approve, I suspect we have nothing to say about it down the path in the future. So where I'm going with this is, at the last meeting, we were told, oh, this is treated, so it should stay, the wood should stay this color for about 10 years. But then, if the wood turns gray, and we've got gray, like, we probably have nothing to say about how it's treated going forward. And if the wood's gray and the concrete's gray, we're going to have a gray box.
Yes, the wood will be required to be sanded and treated every five to 10 years, but really just on that south facade. Nothing on the north facade that we're looking at is going to be fading. It'll take 15 to 20 years to fade.
Because it's under that?
Yes, it'll get no direct sunlight.
Okay.
But the south facade, you are correct, that will need to be sanded and refinished every.
So the intention is to keep it the original color, okay? Thanks.
Yep.
David, have you guys been in discussion with contractors about pricing for this, about forms? Like, can you elaborate a little bit more on the board form?
Yeah, so the cost of adding board form concrete to the walls is about $50,000. It ranges $50,000 to $56,000 depending on what size we go with or a mixture. And the ad for veneer is 150. So $98,000 more.
I guess I'm more speaking of, are we using, you know, natural wood? Are we going to be using synthetic forms for this?
It'll be natural. We looked at form liners, but the repetitive nature of the patterning on it was not really attractive.
Yeah.
It just looks like a dressed up Simon's form, so it would be true, one by six or one by eight wood.
And the idea is to keep it a consistent texture, right? Like a consistent board size, there's no?
No, it would be either one by six or one by eight. We'd be doing a mock-up, a small scale mock-up down the road to get the texture right, to get the pigment right, to get everything exactly as we want it. So it would not be an uncontrolled situation. We'd have, you know, pretty good control over that.
Okay, thank you. Still think we're a little bit divided here. And I don't want to put this to a vote, we end up in a tie here or something.
Impossible.
Yeah, okay.
Can I ask again real quick? What percent of the building is this, the board form?
20%.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like 20%.
So 80% is wood.
Correct. Oh, and that doesn't include the bridge. That's just the wood-to-concrete relationship.
What's the square footage of it? Do you have that number?
I don't have the exact number. I can pull it up here in a few minutes. Yeah, 2,200 square feet.
Okay. Nick, and I'm just, I'm going to go around here just so I can keep tabs on how everybody's feeling about this. You're in support of concrete so long as it matches the, the image. And?
Yeah, I, I, I think that I, I personally would be in favor of a motion to approve with the condition of, you know, bringing us.
I'm just listening.
You go. With the condition of bringing us a sample for approval.
Okay.
That's, that's my.
Conditional approval is what you're seeking.
With, with pigment?
Subject to, subject to approval of the, subject to review and approval of the, of the, of the, of the sample.
Right.
They can bring it to us, or, you know, they could tell us when it's onsite. We can all decide whether we want to go over there and look at it.
Okay.
The mock-up.
And?
Which is actually in, in alignment with what I think you were looking for, you know, in general for projects like this. This, I think, is a perfect example of where that works really well.
Okay, and in, I guess, secondarily to that, as far as how this represents a gateway into our community, you feel like this is an applicable?
I'm okay with it. Yeah, I really like it. I think it's good design. I think it's progressive. It's forward-thinking. And I'm okay with people telling us what carbon Dale is. I don't need to tell other people what carbon.
Great. Franco, same to you.
I think it's better than stucco.
Thing is better than stucco. And you know, I know we need to have that continuity between, you know, other development along one thirty three. But. It's like what Nick said, this is a, you know, progressive development. There is some elements that, you know. Maybe we could find. Within Carbondale. Um, you know, I look at the bridge and I think of. The the Rio Grande bridges, so you know, there's it's not just building elements, it's also. Structural elements that are within our town. Um, I think having a maybe a sample, and we have mockups on this on this, uh, PDF. And, you know, I'm. I'm ready to approve it as shown in this, uh. In your PDF, but you know, if you guys want to. Continue along the path of. You know, proving with the mock, um, with the sample. I'm fine with that as well. That's all.
Question for Nick and Franco. Um, when you're talking mockup with the board form, are you also requesting pigment or no?
I'm I'm requesting as proposed in the PDF. So if it does take pigment.
Yeah, I thi- I think they're approving the image and whatever. Methods and means that go about that to get that image is what we're looking for. Or what they're looking for. I mean, to speak for everybody. Kim?
I would be good with the image. Um, I'd I'd love to see them. Try and match that. That'd be a great exercise and a fun one, so let's see it.
I want to see that gorgeous building that I fell in love with. When you first showed it to us. I think this is a an incredible project and I love it. But I really think that that concrete kills it. From a design perspective, I I really like the building and I love all the iron and everything else, but I think that stone was part of it.
Thank you to my fellow commissioners for their comments and, um, I Chester, I wanted to say from, I think, the very first time that you met with us. Um, I said bold move, um, you know, it is the gateway to town, um, but essentially what I want to remind my fellow commissioners is. You know, I think Chester came to the table proposing, uh, in a space for the community to get involved. Um, being that it's on the entrance to Carbondale, they can pull over and grab some food, or if they're on their way out of town, I think those were some of the comments that I first heard the applicant. Mention, um, when they first proposed this project, um, with the bike trail, I know they are proposing some bike parking along the back there, so. I just want to remind our fellow commissioners is, um, I I don't know, like, maybe Nick said, uh, I don't know that we. Get to tell folks what Carbondale is or what it should look like, um. In in granular detail, um, and I think what Chester is proposing here is. A a neat interior space for a community, so I want to remind, um, everyone here that. Although the outside may reflect what they're proposing on the screen, I think people will be drawn to this project for. The community that's created inside, um, and that I think ultimately drives Carbondale to locations around town, so. Um, I stay comfortable with what they are proposing. That's that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
Um, I'd like to. Say to the fellow board members that it's also not our duty to. Value engineer projects for people because of failure of due diligence. Um, they could have known before they pulled a permit that it was outside of their budget. Um, as for design, I think the bridge. Is an interesting element. And does that offset? The requirement to have stone. You know, because we're talking about them, you know, trying to save seventy to a hundred thousand dollars. They could do that in other ways if they got creative with the interior. It is the gateway in terms of bike path, because that's where the artway is. Um. It's visible from two sides to the public. It is. Twenty percent of the building, that's a lot in terms of changing a material. I suppose I would have felt better had they come to us with this as an option last time. But they didn't. So that's what I'm still struggling with. Um, there's there's the. Trust. That we're going to get what they're offering today. Um, because I feel that they've already. Broken that trust by submitting for permit with materials changes. And then being given clear direction last time and only coming back with texture. And no mockups, because they did also discuss possibly having mockups. Um, but they did not bring the architect that presented, so we can't ask him about that. Thank you.
Yeah, I've kind of said, I I like it. I think it's. I like it. I like the whole building and I do think. I would be drawing, I mean, that mostly wood and the wood's beautiful. I think wood really is warm and attractive and you've got some concrete walls, which I have in my house and. I had this umpa today in in the library and about four people walked by and said, that's a. Awesome building, you know, I think it's gonna be great. I love it.
I guess my my final thoughts on this are. Uh, I think when this was first proposed. The main hiccup was the locations. I don't know, the distance to a potential roundabout. When it was first presented to us, there was overwhelming approval, I think, from public. And from the board on the original design. We as a committee and Jared, please correct me if I'm interpreting this incorrectly, but we as a committee are tasked with. You know, preserving some of what we find to be the town's vision of what we've laid out in the comprehensive code, what's in the UDC. And special review comes to those projects on one thirty three. Right? So I do think it is in our committee's best interest here to speak for the town in that light. And. You know, as 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 far as I'm concerned, I I very much. And with the stone. And so I think we have enough. Strong opinions here. I think everybody's not really wavering from what I'm understanding here. So I think we'll just let the numbers do the talking between the board. And I would like to. Add a condition of approval to this that we do review any samples that are produced. I don't know when we're gonna be able to get those samples reviewed or if that's an onsite thing, Jared, are you? Privy to. Any of these examples in the past? How can we ensure that this is smooth for everybody?
Yeah, I would recommend having, um, you know, an onsite material mockup produced. Um, ask the P and Z prior to a meeting, once it's ready to swing by.
Yep.
And provide, um, at a meeting, kind of that that formal, yep, that reflects what we saw in the rendering.
A a full materials board, not just the concrete.
Um, I think it's, sure, you know, I think it wouldn't hurt to see materials in connection, but really the concrete's the material in question, so. Um, you know, I don't think. I I don't, I don't want to expand the review to, well, once we see a mockup or not. We don't think that.
The same onsite as it is in this presentation packet.
Okay. Okay, uh, do we have? Do we have anybody who'd like to clarify what this additional condition of approval is? Nick, this was yours. Would you like to create the language for this?
Okay, so. You want me to? Make motion?
If you if you would, so that would be awesome too.
Uh, move to approve the miners. I I'd like to move to approve the minor site plan for five two two highway one thirty three restaurant. Approving the use of. Form for board form concrete instead of stone on the exterior walls of the building, subject to review. Of a mockup of the concrete. And the wood. Just materials.
This this siding material.
Okay, subject to review and approval of materials pallet on site.
Do I have a second?
Got that.
Okay, so then let's put it to a vote. Everybody, uh, in favor of concrete and approval. I would like you to vote aye. And Cindy?
Aye.
Anne?
No.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay. Yep, four to three. The ayes have it. So moved?
Thank you guys.
Yeah, Chester, David. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you guys.
All right. We got somewhere. We made our motion.
We we did. I appreciate the motion. I thought it was a good dialogue, so.
Yeah.
Not every motion and not every vote needs to be seven, nothing, so it's it's okay. It's okay to respectfully disagree.
Yeah, and and going off of that, I I'm thinking, I think I'm speaking out of turn here as far as our thing is concerned, but I do appreciate. People holding to what they believe and feeling comfortable to say no, I feel like, and I've made this comment before. I feel like we're all always overwhelmingly yes on a lot of these things, and so, uh, I would just like to. Uh, address that. I I respect everybody for their opinions tonight, so thank you for sharing those and holding to them.
Concur.
Great. Staff update.
Um, let's see, I think. Only updates probably town manager related. Kim, you might have heard this. Let's see, uh, tomorrow is Lauren's last day. Um, and we will have Kevin Shoresman, our public works director. Who will, um, serve as our interim town manager until our new town manager. Um, Ryan Highland starts on, I believe, August fourth. So about a month of Kevin being the interim, um, Ryan was one of the finalists. Um, he spent. Uh, about twenty years or so with the town of Silverthorne. About fourteen as the town manager there, so he has a lot of experience. Um, and is coming over here to join our community. So I I think that's probably it on staff updates. Uh, yes, so the twenty fourth, um, when we kind of went through. The calendar at the beginning of the year, we identified cancelling in the seven twenty four meeting. That's the one right before mountain fair. Just want to check in that everyone is still comfortable cancelling that.
Absolutely.
And then the first meeting in August. August fourteenth, um, will likely be cancelled as well unless there is a. Massive pressing public hearing. I will be, um, backpacking in Wyoming, so. I I won't be here, so, uh. You'll be out of town, so, um, Ellie can certainly run the meeting, but, um, unless there's an absolute pressing. Issue, we will likely cancel that meeting, so.
Do we need to determine that as a commission right now?
No, it's more of just a heads up.
Cool.
Um, we hope at your guys' next meeting to, um, to. Present some information on, um, ADUs and request that the. Uh, Plan Zoning Commission initiated code amendment to. Uh, begin the process of discussing ADU regulations. So that we can have something publicly noticed for kind of the end of August to begin those conversations in ours, so. Right now, that looks like likely the meat of the next meeting.
Mm hmm.
Um, you know, what will kind of show you or tell you what we have to date, see if there's other information that we can be working on in the meantime and then. Um, hopefully initiate that and get the public notices out.
Jared, in order for us to initiate that, and sorry for speaking out of turn here, but if. If we want to see that on there, is that something that we have to? Email you to put on the agenda or is that an agenda item that staff will provide for us to? Request, I know you've requested, or we brought this up, I think, in the last three meetings and. I just want to make sure that as a commission, we're not dropping that ball.
No, no, it's it's I just haven't had a chance to.
Right, okay.
To get that, um, if there is things you guys want on the agenda to kind of. Answer the question you might not be asking, feel free to. Send us information. The answer might be, no, we don't have time or capacity to do it, but it certainly we can add it to the list. Um, the ADU one is just, we we kind of out, we kind of identified this July meeting to begin that knowing. That we were going to have some canceled meetings, looking at public noticing timelines.
Right.
Um, and the last thing we want to do is have you guys initiate it too early and then it just kind of sit fall off the public radar. Um, i- if we're gonna start talking ADUs, we want to. Kind of continually talk ADUs at at meetings if we can.
Great, thank you.
Mm hmm.
A quick question, who's ta- is Kevin? Who's taking Kevin's role?
Kevin will be doing his own role.
So he's doing two roles?
Sure.
He's done it before.
He's superhuman. Um, yeah, I I don't think, I I I think it's gonna be very much more town manager light duties. Um, I don't think we're gonna be kicking off a ton of big things. We'll wait until Ryan joins, but. He'll kind of help keep the moody as the meetings. Moving forward, signing the checks that need to be signed, things like that. Yes. Um, so he'll be a busy person for the. Next month or so. Get your questions in yesterday. What's that?
Can you get that Comcast project approved before he starts as town manager?
Kevin can do anything. But yeah, that's all we have for staff updates.
Great, thank you. Uh, Commissioner comments. Nobody, all right, yeah, I think I jumped the gun with this, but again, just reiterating, um, thankful for everybody's voice and. Being very assured in your opinions on this. This is a town. This is not, you know. I don't know, this isn't just a a yes board, right? So I think if everybody. Continues to bring their opinions and hold them strong like we have shown with this project in particular, I think this is. Definitely going to help our commission and our reputation, so thank you, everybody.
I could also just add that it thanks for good leadership, because it helps a lot to, you know, keep it all civil.
Thanks, Nick. Alrighty, um. I don't need to make a motion. Let's get out of here. Meeting adjourned.